Good afternoon. It is Thursday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Welcome to Woodstock City Council. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section two thirty eight subsection three point three of the municipal act. And section sixteen point six point two four of the city of Woodstock procedural by law. This meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and broadcast on Rogers TV. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the city's website following the meeting. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings and minutes page of the city's website. Councillors will be raising their hands in the view of the webcam when moving a motion requesting to speak and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they are requested to inform the clerk. And welcome everyone and council can turn on their webpages. Do we have any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, disclosure of new business or matters arising from the minutes, councillor Fraser.
Your worship, I have a notice of motion for the next meeting.
And now, we want to do the notice now or wait for later?
Just, I'll wait for later. I just wanted to make.
Very good. Thank you. And next item on the agenda is the minutes from our September third meeting. Councillor Fraser?
Yes, I move by myself and second by councillor Tate at the minutes of the regular meeting Woodstock City Council held on September third, two thousand and twenty be adopted.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And then next item on the agenda is additions the agenda. Councillor Fraser?
That the following items be added to the agenda, seven B, Mark Burke. Z N eight twenty or dash twenty dash seven, application for zone change, true bill construction, Inc., four fifty seven Spencer Street. Item seven C, Revell Patel, O P nineteen dash twelve dash eight and Z N eight dash nineteen dash twenty nine. O P nineteen dash thirteen dash eight and Z N eight dash nineteen dash thirty. Application for official plan amendment and zone change by one nine zero four nine six eight Ontario Limited and two six five seven oh eight six Ontario Limited. East side of Lampman Place and Christine Sawyer. O P nineteen dash twelve dash eight and Z N eight nineteen dash twenty nine. O P nineteen thirty dash thirteen dash eight and Z N eight dash ten dash thirty. Application for official plan amendment and zone change by nineteen oh four nine six eight Ontario Limited and two six five five seven oh six oh eight six. Ontario Limited, east side of Lampman Place.
Thank you. And a seconder? Is councillor Talbot, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our next item on the agenda is delegations. And today we have. Phil Holst with Ducks Unlimited to bring an update regarding the Brick on Wetland project. As well as the project that we have at the four oh one on city lands with. The Cowan Foundation as well as the city of Woodstock and Ducks Unlimited. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, terrific. I appreciate this chance, Mayor Birch, councillors, staff and guests. To present to you this Woodstock Highway four oh one project that you see on your screen. About a year ago, I spoke with your development officer Brad Hammond. To present an idea about a project where Woodstock could perhaps become a model for other Ontario communities. That wish to take action to improve their natural environment. Along with Mayor Birch, we worked out this idea about a project that is not only restoring. Wetland and other types of habitat in the area, but also becomes a conservation education. Over the years, Ducks Unlimited has created and restored a large number of projects throughout the county of Oxford. And as you can see on your screen, quite a number around the city of Woodstock and in the city itself. Our design is specific to capturing runoff from the watershed of this wetland that is north of the four oh one. It includes a truck, a truck stop, part of the hospital grounds. A large section of subdivision and commercial lands as well as runoff from the four oh one highway that all run through this particular wetland.
I was talking to you for one second, if I could. You need to share your screen. We don't have it up quite yet. Oh, yeah. Sorry to interrupt you.
I'm glad you did. I'm just trying to find out where to, where to do that.
Okay.
Mayor Birch, I'm having a little difficulty figuring out this system and where to get share screen. And I had run through it before, but I can't seem to locate it now for some reason. Perhaps I could come back to you at a later time.
Well, actually, I think we have our IT on right now. He could give you a couple of pointers again. Could just be a window minimized.
Mr. Holes, could you go to the bottom of your screen and look for the share screen button?
Yes, it's for some reason it's not coming up for me.
You may have your primary screen minimized.
Yeah.
Do the councillors have a full copy of the presentation which you were sharing?
I believe they do, yes.
Maybe you could just speak to that and we could go forward and they all have a copy of it.
Terrific.
Thank you.
So you can still hear me fine and I will just, I'm at page three, moving on to page four, which is shows the design of the, the project. And as I was saying, the idea of this design is to capture runoff that is sediment, some pollutants and salt. Run off and treat all of this through this wetland system, which then allows the water to flow through the actual wetland itself, which is very. Efficient at using aquatic plants to further treat water that would then eventually run out and into. Further down into the Cedar Creek watershed, which eventually drains through Southside Pond and into the Thames River. The, the other opportunity with this project is to, on the next page, is to install a wetland sign, which speaks to. Wetlands that work in Woodstock and the action item of a climate solution in action. So often there are opportunities to do things, but unless it's put into action, it doesn't really have much of an effect. And of course, you'll see the partnerships with the logos for Ducks Unlimited Canada, City of Woodstock and Cowan. Cowan Insurance were the ones that, as you can see in your next photo, helped us financially with putting this project together. Of course, there would be a conservation agreement on the next pages. That if the city of Woodstock agrees with, with would sign, which would allow us to go ahead. We have on the next page, completed and received our permit from Upper Thames River Conservation Authority. Which allows us to go ahead and do the project with your permission. Back in March, when COVID was starting to create an issue and there was some thought about with some organizations be able to continue funding like say yourselves. I thought I'm going to apply with the help of Upper Thames River Conservation Authority and Brad Hurtner. To apply for this funding from the Eco Action Fund, which is a federal government form of funding. And it was accepted that we have thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars of funding to go towards this project. Also, Cowan Insurance sent us their official statement showing that they have also contributed forty five thousand dollars towards this project. On top of that, Cowan has added another approximately ninety thousand dollars. To help Ducks Unlimited with our research to better treat fragmities infestations across the affected part of Canada. We have Giles Restoration with their quote to do the treating of the fragmities on this particular site. Watt Sanitation is the contract with their confirmed quote to do all the excavation of the wetlands. And the machinery crossings that will allow your tenant to gain access to all of their fields, which they already have. But now they'll be able to drive on dry ground, as well as we have presented with you. The next note about from the Ministry of Transportation, which is the permit that allows us to do work along their highway corridor. As well as install the conservation sign. And so as to not to come to you with another request to do another project without completing the first one. I'm happy to say that the Brick Ponds Wetland Restoration Phase One is now completed. It involves the creation of five wetlands, which I would consider a type of natural infrastructure. That also creates habitat that on your screen, if you see this photograph of this marsh, that this wetland. Receives runoff from a large section of subdivision on the south perimeter of the property as well as a apartment complex. All this water runs through these five wetlands and gets captured, slowed down, reduces flooding and also provides increased water flow during dry periods. There's a trail base that we've put together on behalf of the city parks who will complete the trail. We treated a significant infestation of fragmities, constructed five turtle nesting sites and many turtle loafing logs. Installed with the help of the Woodstock Field Naturalists and Osprey Nesting Platform and various other wildlife habitats. And if in the future, there's a possibility to use this site as an outdoor classroom, I've developed a footprint. That would allow to finish off to create an area where students could be brought in to learn about wetlands and nature. Wanted to thank the city of Woodstock for all your support on this particular project. Mayor Birch, yourself, city council and your wonderful staff. Stewardship Oxford Ducks Unlimited Canada, Woodstock Environmental Advisory Committee and Upper Thames River Conservation Authority. Intact Insurance and my friend in conservation, John Harvey. That concludes my delegation report. And if there are any questions.
Thank you. And questions of council, councillor Shadburn?
First of all, I want to thank Phil Holst for his ongoing work with the, with the environment and improving. As a member of the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority too, his name comes up very often is the work he's done over there. My question with the Brick Pond, the second part of your report, the Brick Ponds project update. You mentioned to talk about turtles and everything else and is that, is that area ever been stocked with fish? Phil, is it, there's no fish there? I mean, I know it's a, in essence, it's a manmade lake. So I was curious about that.
Not to my knowledge that it's ever been stocked with fish, but there are some in it and there have been some biologists who have described that sometimes fish, eggs. And maybe small, small fish will be carried from one site to another by birds. Or they follow up the stream. There, there are some warm water fish that I would assume would have come from the Thames River up Cedar Creek and up the spring run. To the site, but essentially it's just more of a warm water type of fish.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Councillor Accioni?
Thank you, your worship. Just want to mention again to Mr. Holst, you always do such a great job with your presentations and everything else. You're so organized. It just as the city residents, I just really wanted to say thank you for all the work you're doing. And this is important for just generally the entire area. So well done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Accioni. It was my pleasure and it continues to be so, same with all of our partners. I, I'll just end by saying unless there are more questions. That what we find is you can have all the funding and all the permits that you possibly have. But if you do not have a willing landowner, you do not have a project. So thank you for being willing landowners and so cooperative and helpful.
Thank you. Further questions of council? All right, we'll move on to our next delegation. We have Mark Burke regarding the zone change for two true built construction at four fifty seven Spencer. Welcome. And we had him on before. Where are you, Mark?
Right here, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. Sorry about that. So I'm just here. Thank you very much and happy to see everybody. This project is, is a really nice, if the house that, that we're going to be tearing down is, has had fire damage. It really is something that, that should be torn down just for all intents and purposes. And going to be rebuilding some midsize two stories. That'll be nice for families, you know, right down by Southside Park. So really excited about the project. I think it's a good example of a quality infill and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none. Thank you very much. And we'll move right along. Our next delegation is Ravi Patel regarding the zone change for the east side of Lampman Place. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Birch and councillors for your time. I just wanted to clarify some, some points that have been brought up from the planning meeting on Monday and. Speak to some of the concerns. So a little bit about my background. I've been a resident of Woodstock since two thousand and eleven and a business owner. The first hotel we purchased in Woodstock in, was in two thousand and thirteen. It was the former Microtel on Athlon Avenue. We converted that to the Best Western, which effectively saved the property from insolvency. And at the same time, about fifteen jobs that the hotel had. And then we proceeded to sell the hotel in two thousand and fifteen. Following that in two thousand and seventeen, we purchased the Holiday Inn Express. And as you all may recall, the, that property was built during the financial, global financial crisis in two thousand and eight and nine. And again, the property was teetering due to absentee management. So once we took over, we completed a full renovation of the hotel and. The only remaining part is the exterior, which we've unfortunately had to put on hold due to COVID. But since we've taken over, the hotel has had a bit of a renaissance and. As of now is in the top ten percent of all holiday ends in North America. So we're, we're ranked about two hundred out of twenty five hundred properties in, in all across North America and Mexico. So that's a bit of our background in operating hotels. Again, with Woodstock's growth since two thousand and seventeen, the hotel's occupancy has also increased. And that is what sparked the need we felt for another property of, of this caliber and upper, upper mid scale. So we definitely feel that a new hotel coupled with the brand power of Hilton, which is the, the franchise that we have selected to proceed with. Will definitely help and bring more, even more growth to, to the hotels as well as the conference center will. Help us build occupancy and attract new events to, to the city. The hotel, the new hotel will create about thirty full-time jobs and the conference center will, depending on the events, will add anywhere from forty to a hundred jobs. Many of which will be part-time opportunities for students. Further companies looking to relocate or open offices in Woodstock will be confident that their staff will have high quality accommodations when they are in the area. With these two hotels and the conference center as well for hosting corporate events. One of the items that was brought up was with respect to parking. So having operated the Holiday Inn for, for the past three years, we do average an occupancy of around eighty percent. On an annual basis, which equates to about seventy rooms per night. And on average, we use about eighty percent of the number of rooms sold for parking spots. Which runs, turns out to about sixty spots per night of the hundred and six spots that we have. So we feel that with the new development, the amount of parking we provided, plus the parking spots that we have at the Holiday Inn. Along with the fact that many of the patrons of the convention center will also be staying at the hotels. So that would reduce the, the, the parking requirements. And then moving on to the noise concerns, the construction of the building will be concrete and steel, which will. Ensure minimal noise outside of the building when events are being held. Furthermore, the side of the building that will be facing the residences will be a service corridor. So that'll be an additional internal buffer for any noise that, that, that may get out of the building. Just finally, as a supporting business, you know, hotels are a vital asset to the community and provide many charitable donations and sponsorship of local teams. We've proudly been sponsoring Woodstock Minor Soccer for, for every year that we've been in operation. And we're the only locally owned hotel in Woodstock. And we're proud to seek every opportunity to give back to the community. I hope this clarified some of the concerns that were raised at the planning meeting on Monday and I'm available for any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Questions of council? We'll start with councillor Talbot.
Thank you, your worship, through to Mr. Patel. I participated in the planning meeting on Monday night, but we didn't have the benefit of the sketches that you provided for. Council today, which I find very helpful and wish we had had them Monday night at the meeting so the neighbors could actually see. So you reference the back of the conference center is a service corridor. And there is parking back there, but it, from what I'm looking at right now, there's no windows back there. Is that correct?
Through the mayor to councillor Talbot, yes, there's, there'd be no windows in that corridor.
Okay, and I, and I used to live in that neighborhood a long time ago and I know the area very well. And I was wondering, I know that you're, you're using the parking back along there. And I think all properties back there have their own fence line in that. But is there any opportunity to plant trees along the fence line so that the canopies could help a little bit from? Children, like I said, I think now knowing that there's not going to be windows back there, that's a, a, a. Hopefully going to be more comforting to them. So they're not going to feel like they're being looked upon, like their backyards are privacy. But is there, I mean, because it looks like the parking goes right up to the property edge. So is there an opportunity for any type of planting?
Through the mayor to councillor Talbot, yes, so we will, we've proposed a fence along that line. And then we would have, we do have a landscape buffer that we would, would consider for sure to have trees or another vegetation there.
So one of the, one of the questions from the public was they were worried that you're going to, there're going to be two fences and there's going to be a gap. And then there's going to be weeds in between. That's not going to be the case, is it? Like, would you be going to the homeowners and offering to put up a fence that everybody would share or? I think they're thinking of maintenance. Like if you, you know, to have two fences that are going to be side by side, you would have the opportunity for weeds and stuff to come up in between them and. Come in slightly. So I'm just wondering how you were planning on doing that.
Through the mayor to councillor Talbot. I believe the, the fence that's existing is right on the property line. So we'll, we'll have to get another survey done and then we can make that determination at that time. But it's something we definitely work with the neighbors on to ensure that it's satisfactory for, for their, for them as well.
Okay, so you're saying that the fence that is the, the property owner's fence lines are right on the property line?
I, I believe the fence is on the property line between the two, from what we can tell by any stakes that are there.
Okay, I didn't realize there was a second fence. I was up there. I've looked at it numerous times and I only can see the fences that the residents put up.
It, it's one, one fence. It seems to be a continuous fence. So I, I, each section maybe belongs to each homeowner.
My, I can't remember. I was there when the subdivision was built. So I don't, I can't remember if that was put there by the developer, if it was put there individually. My last question is, and I know traffic has been a great concern, and I know we talked about this on Monday night. The egress like the, onto Lampman Place would only be to the south. So they would only be able to turn left to, I mean, to the arterial road, which is Juliana. And then they'd be able to exit also onto Norwich. So there wouldn't be any right hand turn onto Lampman. So we're not going to be trying to direct traffic through Lampman. Is that correct?
Through the mayor to councillor Talbot. So the, our proposal is to have the exit onto Lampman be left turn only. And the curbing would be done as such to direct cars to only be able to turn left onto Lampman. The, there will also be a connection through the Holiday Inn entrance from Norwich. So anybody seeking to get to Norwich, turn right and go to the four oh one would easily be able to go through the Holiday Inn and, and get, get onto the four oh one.
Okay, because that was always a major concern when Lampman opened up, because that was a dead end street for thirty years maybe. And I think they're very concerned that their street's going to have a lot of traffic put onto it. But I mean, the only ones that will really be, will there be any entrance off of Lampman, like by the egress? Will they be able to come in and turn right into the property? So I mean, it's closer to the corner. So they're not affecting as many. Residents other than the new housing that's being built.
Through the mayor to councillor Talbot, yes, so there would be like a two lane entrance into the development and then one lane exit left onto Lampman only.
Okay, and that would sort of be halfway down the property?
It's, yes, central.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Councillor Accioni?
Thank you, your worship. And also thank you, Mr. Patel, for these drawings. I too was quite excited when I actually got to see these. It actually does put my mind ease a lot as well, considering the conference center. So thank you for that. And I still got concerns about parking. I'm not going to lie, as brought up that Monday night's meeting, a lot of the residents have reached out. With parking concerns, they're fearful, of course, people will be parking on Lampman Road and then cutting through just general traffic in that area. So glad to see you've been working with our city staff as well as county staff for the traffic and everything else. And kind of excited to see how all that plays out. I do know there's a need. I believe you're well suited to provide this for city and lots of other different teams and different events. So I'm excited to see something used with this property. So thank you for, you know, being local and investing in, in Woodstock as well. So we do appreciate that, but just know as we work together, I do appreciate to make sure the residents' concerns are addressed and looked at. And, you know, we do what we can to try to appease the neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. Thank you very much. And our next delegation is Christine Sawyer regarding Lampman Place Development. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Birch and members of council. My name is Christine Sawyer. I live at five eleven Riddell Road. And my property backs onto the proposed development area. I have submitted the letter of opposition on behalf of a number of the neighbors on Lampman Place and Riddell Road. And I hope you had a chance to all look at it. I have addressed, as I have addressed in my letter, with the proposed development of an upper mid-scale sixth grade Hilton Hotel and large convention center. And the anticipation of both employment and attractive people and events from other cities, there simply will not be enough parking. We have suggested a number of parkings with the suggested number of parking spaces being one hundred and eighty-two. That only leaves seventy-nine spaces for the convention center. How can that be justified when they say the hall can hold five to six hundred people? There has been no parking talked about for hotel staff either. Have you thought about what will happen with any overflow of parking? Our neighborhood streets are not the answer. Mr. Patel has suggested that the Holiday Inn has twenty percent parking availability nightly. We are talking about when hotels are at capacity, plus staff parking for all buildings and large events taking place at the conference center. Where will people park? There are no options and no alternative parking lots. We all want a venue like this to be successful and running at capacity or near capacity at all times, don't we? The other major concern is the entrance and exit onto Lampman Place. We know that there is the option to enter through the current Holiday Inn on Norwich Avenue. However, Lampman Place will become the main entrance. There are many reasons for this. Many use their GPS on their cell phones for directions. And all directions, all GPS apps that we've tried give the route through Lampman Place through our neighborhood. Even if people were to be shown the route to Norwich Ave, the entrance at the Holiday Inn. They would realize that it's the Holiday Inn entrance. at the Holiday Inn, they would realize that it's the Holiday Inn entrance. They would see the Hilton located behind the Holiday Inn, and would automatically go around the block to see if they could find its entrance. Many service vehicles and delivery trucks will definitely use the fastest route, bypassing all lights and traffic, and will choose to use the Lampman Place entrance. Is Norwich Ave entrance for patrons only, or will service and delivery trucks be allowed to use it? As the current entrance has a canopy-covered entrance into the Holiday Inn that may obstruct such vehicles. So we will not only see more traffic in our neighborhood, but also more service and delivery trucks. With the anticipation from the developer that this will attract many events, our neighborhood weekends will no longer be quiet and relaxing, but increase with traffic and noise. It is one thing to see these drawings on paper, but totally different living it. We see every day exactly what's happening. Just as we were told when opening Lampman Place, that we would not see any increase in traffic, cutting through our neighborhoods to Miss Norwich Ave, we actually see it consistently and at faster speeds. We do want to stress that we are not opposed to such an economic development, but feel it is being greatly underestimated the effects that this large development will have on our neighborhood. This property is just too small for development of this size. As Mr Patel has indicated, this proposed hotel will attract businesses from other cities and bring more growth to our city. The large convention center will also attract new events. With this in mind, and the concerns we have with parking and traffic in an already congested area, we feel that a perfect commercial property, such as 555 Mill Street, would be a better fit for such a large development. This is located right, right off the 401 at exit 230, and would be a great area for future growth to be developed as well. Housing for residents over the age of 55 would be a great benefit for the location at Lampman Place property, as we all know that this type of housing is very needed in Woodstock. I ask you, how can you vote yes with a clear conscience knowing about these facts? What recourse will be available to our neighborhood when Lampman Place becomes the main entrance, causing increased traffic, and parking starts spilling onto our streets? I also would like to address the fence line that was just mentioned. I understand that he's willing now to speak with neighbors and saying that it'll be something looked at. Once zoning, once zoning takes place, there's nothing that we can do. So for, for anyone to tell me that we think the property line comes to the fence, we will address it then. It's a little too late. And for zoning to go through and then have something like I've suggested, two fences or something like that, that's not rectifiable after the zoning's been changed. For these reasons, as well as what I mentioned in my opposition letter, we respectfully ask you to vote no for this proposed zone change on Lampman Place. As it sounds, some of you have made your decisions, and unfortunately, a lot of neighbors here have felt this way prior to me doing this work for this opposition. They feel a lot of times these decisions are made before it's brought before the public. That is unfortunate, but I thank you for allowing me this time to speak to council.
Thank you. Questions of council? Councillor Agioni?
Thank you, your worship. Through to Christine, of course. Thank you for voicing your concerns, of course. I know you've put a lot of work, and I've certainly spoken to a lot of your neighbors over the last week or so especially. I share a lot of the concerns. I have said that as well, traffic being really the one that is the biggest concerns. And I do feel better today, I will admit, after seeing the drawings and a lot of that Mr Patel did offer us. So I'm glad at least that was given up and really just wanted to say thank you that we do hear you, we do listen. And it's, it's situations like this where, as councillor, I can honestly say where I lose a lot of sleep trying to decide what's good for the city as well as keeping in consideration of what's also good for the neighborhood. So just want to say thank you for, for presenting it and to all the neighbors. Okay, thank you.
Can I just add one more thing? With that being said, the traffic and everything, I have just actually last night realized that there's going to be a development of 544 apartment buildings on Athlone Ave as well. And the application has just been put in. And with those 544 apartments driving down Juliana is going to cause more traffic in the area. The traffic now is bad enough. I understand they're going to widen streets, the left-hand turn lanes. But the traffic now, at times during the day, busy times, people are lined up to Athlone Street, and I've seen cars come from Athlone into oncoming traffic just to turn down Lampman Place, because they don't want to wait, because the traffic is so bad. So the concerns are not just for now, it's for the future as well. So you know.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Councillor Schattenberg?
I'm not sure if this is just a statement or maybe one of these confusing things that needs to be rectified or considered in the future. I know so when you drive in the 401 eastbound towards Woodstock, they actually direct you to go to Harp, he's in all these restaurants down on Norwich Ave. It suggests you take the 230 exit. And if you take the 230 exit, then all of a sudden you're driving down Juliana, past the hospital, past two retirement homes, past two places of worship and whatnot, down Juliana, all the way from Mill Street. In theory, just to get to Norwich Ave, which, as Christine has just alluded to, then you probably end up sitting, it's car number 20 or car number 25, trying to turn on the Norwich Ave, because you've been dragged all the way down from Mill Street because of the 230 exit. I think maybe something can be done somewhere along the lines, too, I think, to now that especially since the 401 interchange has been fixed, the clover leaf has been fixed at Norwich Ave, that maybe those signs from the Ministry of Transportation can be moved to the proper exit into Woodstock and exit 230. As we all know, the regional commercial note has been extremely successful in city, and I'm not just talking about the commercial stores and retail, but we all can count the number of restaurants and eateries and coffee shops along that stretch, too. So we can certainly think Christine's got concern there as far as not only the hotel industry, but retail and also restaurants along Norwich Ave. And which, which direction are people taking? You're, you're right. I'm one of those people, you leave the hospital area, I drive down Finkle to get to Parkinson. And I, they're in essence driven past the community complex and in essence avoided Juliana and the Norwich Ave intersection. But there's certainly lots to be talked about. And you talked about future developments residentially, but certainly for a commercial in that area, there still might be more to come. So there's certainly stuff to be considered, that's for sure.
Thank you very much. And we'll continue along. Thank you very much, Ms Sawyer. And next item on our agenda is consideration of planning reports. And we have the application for zone change for 457 Spencer Street True Built Construction. And councillor Lauter, and seconded by councillor Agioni. There we go.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approved the application for lands described as part lot 49, Plan 77 in the city of Woodstock to rezone the subject lands from residential zone 1R1 to residential zone 2R2 to facilitate the construction of a single detached dwelling on each lot proposed by Related Application for Consent B 20-17-8. And further, that any comments received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. Ms Hasler? Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so this first application for zone change is, as councillor Lauter pointed out, it's to create, or sorry, to rezone lands from R1 to R2, and that would facilitate the development of a single detached dwelling on each lot. As council may recall, this application, or a similar application came before council back in July, and that was to sever the lots. And initially, or sorry, formally, there was a single detached dwelling on the parcel. And then the applicant purchased it, severed the lot, and is now coming forward for the zone change. And so at this point in time, the applicant is applying for the zone change to satisfy a condition of the recently approved severance application, which was approved by the Land Division Committee on August 6. And the applicant is requesting, I'm just going to scroll down here to the proposal. So the applicant is proposing to rezone the lands from the R1 to the R2, which both zones permit single detached dwellings. However, the R2 zone permits single detached dwellings on somewhat smaller lots. So the minimum lot frontage for a single detached dwelling in the R2 zone is nine meters, whereas in the R1 zone, it's 12 meters. Through staff's analysis of the proposal, staff are satisfied that the applicant can adequately fit two single detached dwellings on, on the two lots. They can provide adequate parking, they can meet the required setbacks. And the sizes of the dwellings would be generally in keeping with the area. We also circulated the, the application to a number of agencies. There were comments that were received, but generally, these comments would have been addressed through the conditions of the severance. And so in light of our review, we feel that this application is in keeping with the provincial policy statement as it's, as this is a form of intensification and infill. It's providing for a mix and range of housing types. And also, it's in keeping with the low-density residential policies of the official plan. And it's also in keeping with the R2 zoning. And based on, on those points, we'd recommend that this application be given approval.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our next item on the agenda is for 76 Wellington Street, application for zone change. And looking for a mover and a seconder, moved by councillor Fraser and a seconder councillor Tate.
Woodstock City Council approved the application for lands described as part lots 1 and 2, block 12, Plan 34 in the city of Woodstock, to rezone the subject lands from Central Commercial Zone C5 to Entrepreneurial District Zone C3, certify a condition of Related Application for Consent B 20-27-8, ensure the consistent zoning across the newly enlarged parcel. And further, any comments received in public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. Ms Hasler, welcome again.
Thank you. So this application for zone change, as councillor Fraser pointed out, is also an it's an attempt to satisfy a condition of a recently approved severance. And so as council can see on the, on the map that I'm sharing, that there was a, there was a, the red parcel is the lands that were recently severed, and they were severed from the green parcel, and they were added to the blue parcel. And so the applicant is simply requesting a zone change to make the zoning consistent across the blue and the red parcel. And so they're requesting to go from the C5 zone to the C3 zone. Currently, there's a single detached dwelling on the subject property. There was a detached garage that was part of the lot to be retained, and the building department has asked that it be removed. And that was also a condition of the severance. The application was circulated to a number of agencies, and just like the previous application, there were a number of comments that were received, however, they were applied through conditions through the recently approved severance application. No development is being proposed at this time. The enlarged lands are in keeping with the C3 zoning. And so based on that, we're satisfied that the application can be given approval.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Next item on our agenda is the application for zone change for Prodigy Power at 139 Housers Lane, looking for a mover, councillor Talbot, and a seconder councillor Tate.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approved and approved the recommended zoning bylaw amendment filed ZN 82013 for lands comprising part lot 14, concession 1, Blanford, Part 1, 41R 9339 in the city of Woodstock, whereby the lands are proposed to be rezoned from Special General Industrial Zone M32 to Special General Industrial Zone M3 36 to permit a number of new uses in addition to the existing uses of the M32 zone. And further, that any comments received from the public were viewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. And Ms Hasler, welcome again.
Thank you. So this application for zone change is to rezone the lands from M3-2 to an amended M3-2 zone. And the applicant is requesting to add a public garage, tractor, trailer, sales and service establishment, and service shop. And that would be added to the existing list of permitted uses already in the M3-2 zone. For council's information, the the applicant recently constructed a industrial building on the subject property. The property is about two acres in size. And the property is located in the Baysham Park Industrial Park. And so according to the official plan policies of Baysham Park, business park is generally lighter industrial type uses, and it allows also for a number of service commercial type uses. And council may recall that in our report, we indicated that in years gone by, the intent was to exclude automotive type uses from the business park, the Baysham Park Industrial Park. However, over time, we've, staff have supported a number of automotive type uses in this area. And there are quite a few now in this, in this area overall. And so based on that, we feel that the proposed uses are generally in keeping with the area. It's, we did recommend, however, though, that the applicant requested an amended M3-2 zone. And as council can see, there are a number of M3-2 zones in the area that have been applied to a number of other properties in the industrial park. So in this case, we recommended that the property get its own site-specific zoning, so an M3-36. And then in the future of other properties in the Baysham Park area, wanted to apply for similar type uses to be permitted on their sites, we would evaluate them on a case-by-case basis. In light of review with, with respect to the provincial policy statement, we feel that this is adding, it's promoting a mix and range of employment uses and diversifying the economic base. And as I said, it's generally supported by the official plan policies as it's a service commercial type use in an industrial area, and it'll support businesses, also other industrial businesses in the area. So in light of that, we recommend that this application given approval as well.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next one on the agenda is for application for zone change for next pump at 590 Hatch Street, councillor Tate, and seconded by councillor Lauter. Thank you.
Make a motion that Woodstock City Council defer the application for lands described as part lot 2 on the south side of Hatch Street, Plan 220 in the city of Woodstock, to rezone the subject property from residential zone to special residential zone 3 to facilitate the conversation of the existing two dwelling to a three-unit dwelling.
Thank you. And you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Or sorry, councillor Fraser, you have a question? That was a motion?
Did you need a seconder for the motion?
I think we've got it. Councillor Lauter is a seconder. And so all those in favor? And carries. We'll defer that one. Our next one on the agenda is for Lampman Place and the official plan amendment and zone change. And so a lengthy one. Let's see. Who would like to be the mover on that one? We'll go councillor Fraser, and a seconder will be councillor Lauter. Thank you.
The Woodstock City Council support the application to amend the county official plan file number OP nineteen dash twelve dash eight and OP nineteen dash thirteen dash eighteen. Submitted by one nine zero four nine six eight Ontario Inc. And two six five seven zero eight six Ontario for the lands league who describes part loss fifteen to dash eighteen. And sixteen hundred and part five forty one R dash eighty seven forty eight. And part lot nineteen plan sixteen hundred, part three forty one R dash eighty four seventy seven and part one forty one R dash eighty one oh four in the city of Woodstock to designate lands regional commercial node to facilitate the establishment of a two story conference center and six story hotel on the said lands. And further that the Woodstock City Council approved in principle of the zone change applications. File number Z N eight dash nineteen dash twenty nine and Z N eight dash nineteen thirty submitted by one nine zero four nine six eight Ontario Inc. And two six five seven zero eight six Ontario Inc. For the lands league who describes part loss fifteen to dash eighteen. And sixteen hundred and part five forty one R dash eighty seven forty eight and part lot nineteen plan sixteen hundred forty one R dash eighty four seventy seven, part one. And forty one R dash eighty one oh four in the city of Woodstock, rezone the lands from special residential zone three R three dash twenty five. And future development zone FD to special regional commercials on C six dash S P. To facilitate the establishment of a two story conference center and six story hotel on the said lands. And for the comments received in the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to the planning matter.
Thank you. And welcome again, Ms. Hashler.
Thank you. So this last application today before council is for an official plan amendment and a zone change. And as councillor Fraser indicated, the zone or sort of the official plan amendment is to redesignate lands to a regional commercial node as well as to rezone the lands to a regional commercial node zoning with special provisions. The special provisions would include allowing for the use that's being proposed as well as addressing relief related to the building height, parking aisle width, parking area setbacks and the number of parking spaces. And overall, if this application, if these applications are approved, this would facilitate the development of a two story conference center and a six story hotel and the hotel would have approximately or sorry, would have a total of a hundred and three units in it. And then just, just for council's information, there was a similar proposal, as, as you all know, the Holiday Inn. And that was for an official plan amendment and a zone change, and that was approved back in January two thousand and six. The applicant did some submit functional servicing report and a traffic impact study in support of the subject application. The overall area of the property is two point six eight hectares. So we went into more details on Monday night. So I'll just kind of give a synopsis of, of that. But generally staff are satisfied that the, the proposal can be supported. As we feel that this is a natural extension of the Holiday Inn site. There are a number of other hotels in the regional commercial node. We also feel that the proposal, the applicant has provided a proposal where the two story conference center is closest to the adjacent residential development and they've pushed the six story development or six story hotel to the southern side of the property, which would be adjacent to a site that is designated and approved for an apartment building with a maximum of nine stories. And the applicant also has with respect to requesting relief from, from a number of setbacks. The applicant has or staff are supportive of the, those requests as the relief that's being requested is not for any of the setbacks related to the adjacent residential development. I also should point out, just for, for clarification that there are the three sites, they are under separate ownership and they will remain as three separate sites. So there's the Holiday Inn, the site with the conference center and then the site with the proposed hotel. But the applicant is proposing that these sites will share parking and access. And they will establish easements over these sites to ensure that, that the sites can continue regardless of ownership sharing in these, these amenities. The application was circulated because, because the neighbors are concerned about parking. We I'll just speak specifically to that. The building department reviewed the parking requirements. The applicant is requesting to reduce the number of total number of parking spaces from three hundred and sixteen to a hundred and ninety two. And the building department did indicate that they feel that the requirement for the for the parking is a bit excessive. And they in fact indicated that they were satisfied with the total number of parking spaces that were being proposed. And further to that, they indicated that based on the proposed site plan, there are a number of spaces that may not work from a logistics standpoint. And so they may need to be removed through the site plan approval process. And so the building department recommended that a total of a hundred and eighty two spaces be supported. And so that would be a reduction from three hundred and sixteen to a hundred and eighty two. With respect to, to traffic, a traffic impact study was indicated or sorry, was undertaken. It indicated that the intersection of Norwich and Juliana would benefit from intersection retrofitting to improve the capacity of the left turning movements at the east and westbound locations. And for council's information, County Public Works indicated that they have, are working on a detailed design relating to this intersection and it'll be undertaken this year with construction tentatively planned for twenty twenty one. I should note too that the, the applicant indicated earlier to council that there was, there's a left hand turn only lane kind of coming out of, coming onto Lampman Place. And that's actually not what's being proposed in the plan that we have received. And so for a left hand turn lane only staff would ask for, for the opportunity to further review that where we're confident that we can, we can undertake that through the site plan approval process. However, it may be recommended by engineering staff that it not be a left hand turn only lane. But at, at this point in time, we don't have, have a plan before us to, to determine that. Further to that, in light of the provincial policy statement, we're supportive, the, the PPS is supportive of the proposal. As we feel that it provides a mix and range of employment uses. We also feel that it's in keeping with the official plan policies as I indicated before. It's a natural extension of the Holiday Inn. And it also caters to the traveling public, which is, which is similar to the rest of the, the intent of the regional commercial node in general. And staff are also satisfied that the requests for relief are fairly minor and, and can be accommodated on this site. And so in light of that, we'd recommend that this application be supported by council.
Thank you. Questions of council? And we'll start with councillor Lauder.
Thank you. Through to the planner. Yes, I know that people have a very large concern about the parking and parking on the street. Is there any possibility, and maybe this isn't the time to be asking this, but I'll check that there could be no parking signs put along that street once this building is, these buildings are erected. And if, if that could happen and the other was the, the weeds along that fence line, can they be assured that this property is going to be going over to that, the fence line of Mrs. Sawyer? Or any of the other neighbors that it borders on and assure them that that is going to happen, that there won't be a space in between with weeds growing up in between? Is there anything we can put into the site plan or, or whatever that can happen on that?
So through Mayor Birch to councillor Ladder's question. So I'll, I'll actually answer the fencing question first and then I'm going to defer the no parking signs on Lampman to, to Mr. Ellis in city engineering. So the first question was related to, or the sort of the second question was related to fencing. I do believe we have, we have heard in the past that there are, there is a fencing issue there. And so we're not sure, or I'm not sure today if there's two fences because property owners have put theirs, their fence slightly into their site and not directly on the property line. Usually if the, if it's a shared fence, then they put it directly on the property line. However, if it's not a shared fence, they would put it on, on their property, right? So I'm not sure if there's a case of, of double fencing that way that each, each owner has put it on either side of their property line. But that's definitely something that we can review through site plan. Because I can understand that, that yes, the neighbors are concerned about, about weeds and, and debris in that, in that area. So definitely we can take a look at that through site plan. And then again, with respect to the, the signage on Lampman Street, I would defer that to Mr. Ellis.
So you merit through you to councillor Lauder in regards to the no parking. You know, it certainly could be considered. However, I think sometimes you're penalizing the existing residents that are on the street. You know, we have done it in the past where it has been a request. So it certainly could be looked at the time when the site plan comes through.
Thank you. Further questions of council? And we'll go with councillor Talbot.
Thank you worship through to Andrea. You said that the easement, that there'd be an easement as far as the shared parking because the properties are held separately. That is an easement that's on a registered, that's registered on title, is it not? So that will always exist regardless, regardless of whose ownership?
Through Mayor Birch to councillor Talbot's question. Yes, that's a, it's a permanent easement that's established. And it's registered on title. And yeah, regardless of ownership, it always stays with those properties.
Okay, thank you. And a question through to Mr. Ellis. I was just curious as the comment that was made that engineering might not be in favor of a left hand turn lane only on to Lampman from the project. Is there some particular reason? I'm just curious.
I think that it has happened in the past where we've implemented like a right in, right out. And I'll give you an example out of the Tim Hortons at the north end on Lakeview. There still seems to be a number of motorists that like to use the, the left hand turn and, and turn in and it backs up traffic, right? Another example is at Boston Pizza. Again, I think at one time it was supposed to be a right out and people come and, you know, come and turn anyways. So I think it's a reflection on how do you enforce it? Cause it's just signage, right?
Is it just signage? I mean, I, I thought that you can actually build a left, like if you, if it's actually built in a certain or designed in a certain way. Their only opportunity would be to go left.
Right. So if I look back at the one at Lakeview, again, it's that island is designed to force the people to come in on a right hand turn and leave on a right hand turn. But again, you know, we do have people taking that hairpin turn back into that Tim Hortons. So it is a challenge. You know, maybe we can look at, maybe the, the island could be extended somehow to, to force people to turn left.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Or you want to continue councillor?
Sorry, I couldn't get my microphone off mute. I just, I just wanted to comment on that. I, I, this is a, these are small residential streets. They're not wide and to handle the capacity of large loads of traffic. So having a left hand turn, forcing it back out onto the major arterial road is a far better option as far as I'm concerned, because you definitely do not want that traffic going down through those residential areas. Cause Lampman itself, it's curvy. And then you come up to Salter and, you know, we don't want to be carrying the traffic through residential areas.
Thank you. Further discussion? And I saw other hands. So we'll go councillor Agioni.
Thank you, your worship. Again, I, I don't want to say exactly the same thing as councillor Talbot, but that's basically what I want to say. I've still got a fair bit of concerns here with the traffic. I feel a lot better about the sound and lights. It's the traffic that still kind of gets me and I'm hoping as city staff, we can, you know, some way ensure that it is a left hand turn. I, I'm sorry, I actually thought that that was already decided. It was going to be a left turn only out of there. So it wasn't till Ms. Hashler mentioned that maybe it's not. So I'm really unsure how we can control the traffic. Cause if they start going into Lampman Place, I mean, that, that is going to be a mess, absolute mess. And, and if this is successful, I'm pleased hoping city staff really address that and be in serious by whatever means possible. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And further discussion councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, to the mayor, to our senior planner, I'm just kind of curious more on the, the history of the site because it used to be in an auto wrecker's yard. And then now it's got the medium density residential zoning on it. Was that placed on it recently? Because there was a proposed plan there at some point in time that, that just did not happen before we're now, now we're looking at this zoning change or this official plan change to, to more of a regional commercial node to a permanent conference center and a hotel. I'm just kind of curious about the, the history of this, of this site because obviously people would maybe imagine if someone's lived on Rideau Road for, for thirty years. I would rather have a hotel behind me than an auto wrecker behind me, which it would have been historically what would have been there. But having said that, the zoning change from multi-residential to regional commercial nodes, someone may have also thought that could have been a retail, large retail, but that may have been there in, in its traffic. But anyway, just looking for the history of this, Andrea, if you could pass that along.
Through Mayor Birch to councillor Schadenberg's question. Yes, as far as we know, there was a salvage yard there at one point in time, the applicant did, or a previous applicant undertook a record of a site condition for, for fear of any sort of contamination in the ground. In more recent years, there was a zone change that took place. And I, I apologize, I don't remember all the details, but the, the proposal was at the time for a townhouse development. And I think it was going to be on a private street and it would have been condoed and but since then, the ownership of the property has, has changed hands.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And opposed? And motion carries. Thank you. And our next item on the agenda is the consideration of correspondence. We have from the county of Oxford regarding county composition. Councillor Tate?
I'll make the motion that Woodstock City Council does not support Oxford County Council's position that the council composition be maintained as status quo on beyond the current term of council. And further that Woodstock City Council does not support Oxford County Council's position of continuing to elect a warden from a sitting member of county council beyond the current term of council.
Thank you. And the seconder councillor Lauder, discussion councillor Tate?
Just a short comment that going through the report and all the information we got back from the residents and some of the comments around county council. Residents look to me overall for county prefer a elected at large warden, which makes sense considering the large salary that is associated with it. And it gets to be almost like a well, as you're aware, at county council, the jockeying for that position is getting to be a little bit too much. And I think it would be better to be elected at large myself, but that depends on everyone else. And also I agree, the, the urban centers are getting much bigger. And I know Tilsonberg was questioning whether or not they have proper representation. So just leave it at that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And opposed? And motion carries. Thank you. And let's see, our next is our statement of revenue and expenditures and capital expenditures for the period ending August 31st. Counselor Acioni and the secondor will be Counselor Schadenberg. Thank you.
Thank you worship. Moved by myself, the Woodstock City Council received statement of revenue and expenditure in the statement of capital expenditures for the period ending August 31st. 31st, 2020 is the information.
Thank you. You've heard the motion discussion. Counselor Schadenberg.
Yeah, certainly no intent on going over this line by line. And maybe this is slightly off topic from the, from the financing part of things, but maybe it's a question to our Director of Parks and Recreation on board today. I notice on page 15, that part of the budget was to demolish the park at or the lookout at Lansdowne Avenue. And I don't think we've talked about it at, at a city council meeting before, but it, obviously that parket and that lookout has been sort of demolished as a wooden lookout over there. What's possibly the plan or is there a plan in the future or, or some sort of drawings of what could be done there to replace that lookout or, or is it just going to be kind of left as, as green space long-term? Or do you think you might be sort of public discussion at some point in time as to what could be done at that location there on the big Lansdowne bend?
You, you're worshiped through to the counselor's question. Right now we're looking at, just leaving it as green space. We're putting a lot of our collective efforts into increasing trails. And that lookout right now, I don't know would meet to the, to the level. However, we are proposing that we do have a rec facility need study. And if that comes up as something that is wanted or required by the residents, then we would certainly look into that a lot more closely.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And our next item is the report on the County of Oxford Water and Wastewater Rate Study for 2021 to 2024. Moved by Counselor Fraser, seconded by Counselor Tate. Thank you.
That Woodstock City Council endorsed the comments provided in this report. And this report be forwarded to the Oxford County Council and the report being the report on the County of Oxford Water and Wastewater Rate Study 21 to 24.
Thank you. Discussion? Counselor Lauter?
Could we maybe have the CEO give a little description of what is in that report just for the public's sake?
Your worship, the Director of Public Works is co-author of this report and without due respect, if we can perhaps ask him as a co-author first, if there are any subsequent follow-up questions, be pleased to address them.
All right. Sure thing. Through the mayor to Counselor Lauter's question. Back in August, staff received a report from the county with proposed changes to the water and wastewater rates for the city. After reviewing the report, we find it difficult to support the report and the proposed changes as it has significant impacts to the City of Woodstock residents and industry. The report lacks a lot of detail that justifies what the proposed changes are. I guess one of the first things is we find it hard to support the financial section of it. The one proposal that they have in the report is to have the area municipalities move to an harmonized system. This would see many of the local area municipalities see a rate reduction in the upcoming years, while the same time, City of Woodstock residents would see a much larger increase. This is a bit counterintuitive to what you expect from urban center as generally we have the benefits of economies of scale, which just means you can spread out costs amongst more users and generally have a cheaper system. This will also impact City of Woodstock industry as we, a bit more difficult to attract and retain industry as the area municipalities will have the same rate structure as we have here in the City of Woodstock. If I were to give you an example, and we take a look at Drumbo for the year 2024, for their typical fee for their industrial site, they could expect to see fees in the range of $193,000, but under scenario two, which is the harmonized system, this fee would be $157,000. So that is a $36,000 drop in expected fees for, for that township. So it's hard to see how that is sustainable over the long run. The capital spending plays a large influence into how the rates are developed. The 2016 to 2020 rate structure, the county was anticipating a much smaller reserve at the end of it, but as the, the reserve currently sits, it's much larger than they expected. So one of the questions we had is we're significantly increasing the rates. What stops us from having a much larger reserve than what is needed? When we followed up with the county, they did provide us their 10-year capital program for the city. The details provided in the, the tenure plan were a bit vague. And it was hard to see how they could actually complete the proposed projects in the timeframe that they have allotted within the next four years. Considering when you have to go into the planning, design, approval and construction. Right. So then, so it's a bit ambitious for this timeline and potentially unnecessary at this standpoint. When we follow up with the county to ask, what is the likelihood that they'll actually complete the projects in this timeframe? They indicated that the, their intention was to grow the reserve fund, but there's no mention in the report. What is the appropriate reserve? And where it should sit at the end of this period and what that spending will necessarily go to? Yeah, that's it for me.
Well, and I think I want to thank you for the detail in the report. And I just want to remind all of the viewers at home as well as council that the numbers that were included in this report, the projected starting point after the last rate study was based on the assumptions from the same consultant that's working on it this time. And they had similarly tried to have large rate increases. And of course, myself and other counselors spoke against that. And we were able to have those increases reduced significantly. So in fact, when the previous study had indicated that the Woodstock wastewater reserve would be $2 million, that was based on significant increases that did not happen. And at the time, I spoke about the unprecedented growth we were receiving and that the numbers were not justified. And here we are without those large rate increases that they had projected last time. And in fact, our opening balance for that same reserve is $13 million. And now this time, they've projected large increases again. On the water, similarly, they had projected that the reserve balance would be 7.4 million at the end of the, the period of the last rate study with large increases. And we were able to mitigate those large increases and have something closer to inflation. And in fact, here we are with a reserve balance of $18 million. So I think one thing I want this council and the residents of Woodstock to be sure of is that we will continue to question the county as to where these numbers are coming from and what the justification is that takes away from their models of sustainability. When we speak to other communities that were looking at expanding their systems, they spoke of sustainability. They spoke of the need for proper financing. And then here we are with this report coming through. And I thank yourself and the CEO for putting this report before council. And it just digs that hole even deeper on what they are trying to do to the citizens of Woodstock. Further questions at council? Counselor Lauter?
Just one question that I've always thought and, and when you have, you're talking about millions here in, in reserve for the city. And so there's a lot of interest coming in on that each year. Is that interest going to our reserve or is that just spread over the budget, the county's budget? And I will just go through to any one of the county councillors or yourself, mayor.
I, I can speak to that. So within the reserve allocation policy and the balancing that takes place in each annual review at the county, it's been a practice of the years of late that the interest earned on all of the county reserves and reserve funds be distributed based on the opening balance of each reserve. So the system for Woodstock water and wastewater does receive a prorated amount of interest based on what was earned. And they do the same on the obligatory fund for development charges. So when new subdivisions and commercial enterprises are building here in the City of Woodstock, they pay those development fees that go into the future expansion and oversizing. And likewise, interest is calculated and allocated on a prorated basis.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Tate?
Yeah, I just want to touch on something else on the report, just so the people are aware. So when they talked about increasing, so our operating costs for the water and wastewater increased 4.1% between, oh, sorry, the annual operating cost for Woodstock water and wastewater increases 4.1% between 2020 and 24. Yet our annual increases for the water for our taxpayers is 20% over the same period. So there is a, there's a big concern that the taxpayers have been paying all this money. It's sitting in reserves. And our staff are being very politically correct by saying they've been vague, but we don't need to be politically correct. They're not telling us what they're doing with that money. So that money could be spread all over the county on doing other projects, but our taxpayers here have paid that money. So I know Counselor Birch and I have both expressed concerns over at the county and we've gotten pushback from other counselors and some of the staff of the incomplete reports over there. But as you hear our staff say, it's an incomplete, it's a vague report. And this is not the first one. There are a lot of them. But people have got to be paying attention to what's going over there. I keep saying it and I can't say it enough, but the money being spent and wasted at county is getting ridiculous. But this, this, these rates for our taxpayers are outrageous. We're already paying high rates and the money is sitting there doing nothing. And it's supposed to be for projects in Woodstock, but there will never be enough projects for them to build for our, for our people that, that have paid that money. And remember, every dollar we spend over there, 40 cents is coming from our taxpayers. 40 cents of every dollar spent at that county.
Thank you. Counselor Acioni?
As a city councillor, I'd like to thank all three of our county councillors. Counselor Talbot, Counselor Tate and of course Counselor Birch on county council just for keeping an eye on that and trying to bring attention to not only us as city councillors, but as residents in the city. So just thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the Ducks Unlimited Highway 401 Wetland Rehabilitation Project. And we'll go with moved by Counselor Acioni and seconded by Counselor Schadenberg.
Moved by myself, the Woodstock City Council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign the necessary agreement with Ducks Unlimited Canada.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And I should have say, said this a little earlier when we did have Mr. Holst on as a delegation. Always great when I hear from people in the community that they understand the importance and what's going on in the community. And they always mention how thankful they are that he continues to come forward to the city to keep us up to date on all of the progress. So hopefully someone relays that to him. Next up, we have street naming for Havlock Corner Subdivision for Times Development Inc. And Counselor Lauter and we'll have a secondor of Counselor Fraser.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council name the streets in the Havlock Corners subdivision as follows. Street W, Plaza Drive, Street X, Centennial Court, Street Y, Sobeski Avenue, Street Z, Betty Drive, Street AA, McKay Drive, Street BB, Sobeski Ave., Street CC, Harwood Avenue, Street DD, Harwood Avenue, Street EE, Harding Court, Street FF, Cole Terrace.
Let's see. Discussion? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Counselor Fraser, go ahead, sir.
Your worship through to Counselor Lauter. We're naming two streets after Mayor Sobeski. Or is the one?
That's a continuous street.
Are there continuous streets? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to double check that.
Yeah, yes. And the same with the Harwood Avenue.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Tate?
I just want to point out, this is to Counselor Lauter's benefit. She noticed this in the Harwood Court. She moved that one to the other one because it's a longer street and assuming that it ran along the farm. So hopefully the family's happy with that. But thanks for those changes, Counselor Lauter, in pointing that out.
Thank you. Counselor Lauter?
I, I will mention too that we, there were some of the streets had, for instance, Andrew McKay and Samuel Cole, the, the two names and Counselor Talbot had mentioned at the last meeting when we had the street namings, all the street lists that we should stick to the one name. And so that's why I had suggested that we take the first names off of those names. Streets.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Schadenberg?
Yeah, to the mayor and to council in general, I guess, what, what's the important thing is Havlock Corners here and, and the Kinsman Group that putting together their maps and their brochures and everything like that to be able to promote the, I guess it's really phase five A of their, of their building projects over there. But they want to be able to attach names to it. So when they put up a map, it isn't Street BB or Street CC, they can actually attach a name to it. So I would want, for example, Street Z, that's going to be Betty Drive to eventually have the signage as such. But if they wanted to promote it as Darshan Betty Drive, that would certainly be their prerogative for sure. It's, it's the first name to go along with the surname there. Not sure what council thinks of that, but we, I've kind of discussed the fact in the past where Thomas Parker, for example, should maybe just be Parker Street. Or do we make exceptions to that rule and therefore attach first names on some streets? That's, that's a difficult assessment to make, but maybe something we could continue to discuss right here at this, at this point in time.
Counselor Acioni?
I think I'm, I'm also in agreement with Counselor Talbot, what she mentioned the other day as well, that I think single names, other being at first or last, I guess, depending on the situations as we move forward, I think just makes it a lot simpler moving forward. And my recommendation, my suggestion.
Thank you, councillor Tate?
I also agree with that, the last name, and it's much simpler for everybody involved.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have quite a few land sales. So we'll start with the one to Norfinch Glass and Aluminum. So we'll have a mover of councillor Accioni and a seconder of councillor Schadenberg.
Who by myself, the Woodstock City Council authorized mayor and clerk to sign an agreement of purchase and sale with Norfinch Glass and Aluminum Inc. and that the necessary bylaw be read.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And carries. And the next one is for Three Wood Investments. And we'll have a mover of councillor Schadenberg and a seconder of councillor Fraser.
Yeah, I moved that Woodstock City Council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign an agreement of purchase and sale with Three Wood Investments Inc. and that the necessary bylaw be read.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our next one is the proposed sale of industrial land to two two eight seven five eight eight Ontario Incorporated. And looking for a mover councillor Talbot and a seconder councillor Accioni.
I move that Woodstock City Council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign an agreement of purchase and sale with two two eight seven five eight eight Ontario Inc. And that the necessary bylaw be read.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And we have one more land sale, and that is to Jennifer and Michael Navarro. And looking for a mover, we'll have councillor Fraser and a seconder councillor Lauder.
Your worship, that Woodstock City Council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign an agreement of purchase and sale with Jennifer and Michael Navarro. And the necessary bylaw be read.
Thank you. Discussion, councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, through the mayor to our development officer, Brad Hammond, I'm sure is aboard this afternoon. Just wanted to have some comment on, on our success. I mean, the county of Oxford finally upgraded our Devonshire Avenue. Now they're paving and creating this Griffin Way, which is a terrific offshoot off of Devonshire. And it's, it's filling up very, very quickly. And it's, and it's good to see the city Woodstock and the development office is staying very busy, marketing those properties and, and finding buyers for them very quickly. So congratulations to your team there, Brad and Len Maguire and whatnot. But maybe just comment on, on the successes of Griffin Way so far and, and what is being projected there long term on that street.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, through to councillor Schadenberg. This, I guess, these, this cluster of land sales we've seen today is pretty indicative of what we've seen in Woodstock over the last few years. There's, there's plenty of demand for industrial land, almost more than we're able to service right now at this point. So it's a, a good problem to have. The asphalt, I don't think even is quite dry yet on Griffin Way. And we're, we're basically sold out of land on that street now. We're left with one eight and a half acre parcel at the far end still to sell. And given that we've got a few more months left in this year, I think it's likely before the end of the year that will happen. Following the Toyota investment, so I guess, sorry, back up. For a long time, our land sales were largely kind of two, three acres. That was our bread and butter, most of what we sold. When Toyota came, we kind of switched gears for a bit, and it was larger land sales. It was five, ten, twenty acre land sales. So I think what we see here at council today is kind of a return to, to what we've always seen in the past. It's the smaller land sales by and large to smaller businesses that are growing. They want to, they've either outgrown the space they have, or they're looking to build their own building. They've been leasing and they want to build some equity in their own property now. So yes, good, good news all around.
Thank you, councillor Fraser.
Just to follow up on that, pretty much sold that land along Griffin Way, through to Brad. But we still have a large chunk. We will need to have another street put in to start serving that southern portion of that industrial area.
Go ahead.
And then are we, do we have any interests in, from anybody in that area as well?
Your worship through, through to councillor Fraser. So no, the, the road as it's built today, it comes to a cul-de-sac about two thirds of the way back through the property, and that's, that's where it will end. The, the land that's remaining there fronts onto that cul-de-sac. Some of it is joint to a property that fronts onto Woodall Way. And as I said, there's just this eight acre piece left, so it has frontage on the cul-de-sac. Really no, no need to build the road any further than it is today on that property.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have our zoning bylaw amendment for the appeal at fifty four Pebble Beach Court. Councillor Tate and looking for a seconder councillor Talbot.
I'll make motion that Woodstock City Council supports the decision to refuse to amend the zoning bylaw with respect to applications at N eight dash one nine dash two two fifty four Pebble Beach Court. And for that city clerk be instructed to advise the local planning appeal tribunal.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And that takes us to pre-budget twenty twenty one. And looking for a mover and a seconder. So we'll go with councillor Accioni and a seconder councillor Lauder.
Move that Woodstock City Council direct administration to repair a twenty twenty one budget that provides for the continuation of current programs and services. And further, that Woodstock City Council approve the budget meeting dates as presented.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And that brings us to bylaws. And it'll be councillor Fraser and our seconder will be.
Excuse me, your worship, notice of motion?
Oh, sorry. Thank you for reminding me. I had that note in the wrong spot. Go ahead, councillor Fraser.
Thank you, your worship. I'm providing this information as a notice of motion for our next meeting in October that the Woodstock City Council approved ten thousand finance from the contingency reserve to be provided to the police services board in the event that the Woodstock Police Service determined that a reward for information will assist in the arrest and conviction of individuals, individual or individuals vandalizing the city playgrounds.
Thank you very much for that notice of motion. And we don't need a second round that, no discussion. We'll, we'll discuss that at the next meeting. So next up is the bylaws. So it'll be councillor Fraser and seconded by councillor Schadenberg. Okay.
Thank you, your worship. That the following bylaws be given the first and second reading. Bylaw number nine four zero three dash two zero, a bylaw to provide for the sale in certain lands owned by the corporation of the city of Woodstock to Norwich Glass and Aluminum. Bylaw number nine four oh four dash twenty, a bylaw to provide for the sale of certain lands owned by the corporation of the city of Woodstock to Three Wood Investments Inc. Bylaw number nine four zero five dash twenty, a bylaw to provide for the sale of certain lands owned by the corporation of the city of Woodstock to two two eight seven five eight eight Ontario Inc. Bylaw number nine four zero six dash two zero, a bylaw to provide for the sale of certain lands owned by the corporation of the city of Woodstock to Jennifer and Michael Navarro. Bylaw number nine four oh seven dash two zero, a bylaw to amend the zoning, bylaw number eight six two six dash ten as amended Zen in eight dash twenty dash zero seven four fifty seven Spencer Street. Bylaw number nine four zero eight dash twenty, a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw, eight six two six dash ten as amended Zen in eight twenty dash eleven Wellington Street. Bylaw nine four oh nine two zero, a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw, eight six two six dash ten as amended Zen in eight twenty dash thirteen Housers Lane. And bylaw number nine four one zero two zero, a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw number eight six two six dash ten as amended Zen in eight dash twenty dash thirty one Adelaide Street and Victoria.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Councillor Fraser?
Moved by myself and sectioned by councillor Schadenberg that the following bylaws be given the third and final reading. Nine four oh three dash twenty, nine four oh four dash twenty, nine four oh five dash twenty, nine four oh six dash twenty, nine four oh seven dash twenty, nine four oh eight dash twenty, nine four oh nine dash twenty, and nine four ten dash twenty.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And today we'll start with councillor Lauder.
Thank you. First, I would like to ask if Mr. Connors could provide with a small update on the ongoing issues at the Southside Park?
Yes, through to the councillor's question, your worship. We've had, as, as been reported in several news outlets, we've had someone or some group of people putting down nails, sewing needles and screws in our playground area at Southside Park. What we've done to try to mitigate any harm to children is we've increased the number of inspections that we're doing at these parks and the playground specifically. And we've asked, and once we do notice that there are needles or, or anything that shouldn't be there, we close the park until a certified playground inspector goes through the park and then sees that it's fit to reopen after we, we clean it up. However, we are asking all parents and guardians of children once they've taken their kids to the playground to do a, a, a quick look before they let their kids out on the playgrounds, just to ensure that no one gets hurt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, the art gallery, Woodstock Art Gallery is the fifty fifty art show is starting on September twenty third. And so they're, they do have a lot of works for sale. And part of the money goes to the person who has submitted the, the works, and the other half goes to the art gallery. So it helps out our gallery. And so get your bids in there or just go into the website and see what's up. They've got quite a variety. And at our hospital foundation board meeting on Tuesday, C A O Perry Lang reported that our city recruiter has done an excellent job in finding potential new family physician recruits. And hopefully in the near future, they will choose the practice to practice here in Woodstock. So I hope that that, that comes to fruition. And thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll go councillor Fraser.
Thank you, your worship. I don't have much. Should I remind you, the virtual fundraiser, the walk for Secure Host Hospice? I think it's on Saturday. And the Terry Fox virtual run for cancer treatment is, which is very dear to my heart, is on Sunday. So I don't know if I'll be able to do both, but make every effort I can. So just a reminder. And then, so everybody knows, I brought forth that notice of motion after some discussion with our C A O and, and our police chief. You know, they're doing the best they can, but this is getting a little out of hand. Our parks department is doing a great job. But now, you know, we've had central school targeted. Though rewards sometimes are effective for information that leads the arresting conviction of the people responsible, not always do the work. But what does work is our community. And so I'm of the aspect that somebody out there knows something. And any assistance that the community can give with information provided or observation of our parks and school grounds to bring these individuals into control and stop this. Because if our children get injured, our community gets injured. And it's very important that we get this stopped. So I just plead to our, our community to pitch in, be observant. You see something suspicious around any of the school grounds or parks, call the police department, dial nine one one, get somebody there. Because it's important to the police department to bring this to them on behalf of the city. So that's my little speech for today. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And I think we've heard from a number of individuals about the, the need for video cameras, et cetera. Of course, in one of the recent articles, it was mentioned that there have been some upgrades made to some of the cameras that we have. Of course, under the cover of darkness and now with the COVID masks, et cetera. Some of those images, the descriptions aren't necessarily the best. Of course, the police have put out as much information as they can. Some of the images maybe can't be shared because it might show where cameras are located. But definitely, this is a matter that council takes very serious. And so does the city of Woodstock, the staff in parks as well as the police. So maybe we won't need any of that reward money. We may have prior to the next meeting already apprehended any of the individuals involved in this. But thank you for bringing that notice of motion. And thank you too to councillor Lauder for asking for an update from our director of parks rec. Next up, we'll go with councillor Tate.
Yeah, just kind of on the same issue of the park. I was down at Southside Park Saturday morning for my dad's A G M. I'm not usually out and about that early, but I'd like to say the parks looked fantastic. I couldn't believe the number of people that use that park. I'm usually there later in the day, not quite that early, but the people out walking their dogs, the kids. There was a woman that showed up for my dad's meeting from, was from out of town. She lived about an hour away, but she was so impressed with our parks. She couldn't believe that Woodstock, the size of us, that we have a facility like that. So I know I've commented before about the parks, but thanks again to the staff, the city staff and everyone that looks after it. Because it is a real treasure for the city of Woodstock. Oh, and before I forget, councillor Fraser, we should all be celebrating. If anybody's on Twitter, they would have seen it. He got to ring the bell yesterday for his last chemo treatment. So congratulations to you, and we're all very, very happy.
Thank you. And we'll go councillor Accioni.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say was congratulations to fellow councillor Fraser, of course, for that. That's, that's phenomenal. That's great to see and thinking of everybody else dealing with that right now. With school, of course, back in place, speaking to my daughter who's in grade twelve already, which is unbelievable. It sounds like things are going pretty good at school. Things are being cooperative, and I'm glad to hear that as parents. I know it's still not the most comfortable thing, but we're doing the best we can and just keep encouraging everybody to be safe and healthy. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. And councillor Talbot?
Thank you, your worship. Don't have too much other than with school back, the school buses are back on the roads and crossing guards are out doing their duties. Just reminding everybody that when you hit the forty zone, go down to forty, because our, our men in blue are out watching. So if you want to stay driving for a while, I'd suggest that you follow the speed limit. Just about the COVID, the premier announced today the reduction of gatherings in certain areas, larger centers, of course. We're fortunate that our case numbers have been down, but that doesn't mean we can let down our guard. We need to keep at it diligently so that our cases remain as low as they have been. Especially with the kids back to school. And it's hard to believe that next week will be the first week of fall. So enjoy your last few days of summer. The weather and the sunshine looks great. Thank you.
Thank you. And that leaves us with councillor Schadenberg and myself after him.
Thanks a lot to Mr. Mayor, our worship. First of all, I
Thanks a lot to Mr Mayor, our worship. First of all, I would do, do want to give an extra plug to the Terry Fox Run. It's been an event I've been, I've been involved with for a number of years. Terryfox.org is the, the website. But since we also want to promote downtown Woodstock, here's two kind of related events to the Terry Fox Run locally, which is Sunday, September 20th. They're using the motto this year, one day your way. So in other words, cycle, walk, run, do whatever you want. But speaking of our downtown, two guys in a whisk are selling shoe cookies right now. They're $5. Might sound like a lot for a cookie, but every single nickel of that $5 is going to the Terry Fox Run and they're selling them right now in downtown Woodstock. Two guys in a whisk. And on Friday, that's tomorrow, September 18th, 50% of all the sales of coffee at Bean Town Coffee. Of course, that's also downtown or Reef Street, right across the street from city hall are going to the Terry Fox Run. So a couple of extra events to remember there. But I went down to Roeth Park, the brand new roadway and parking lots all paved up there and was coincidentally, I was there the day the city works department was out with their yellow paint machine painting in the lines. And I posted something on social media about that, a great huge improvement that the city of Woodstock to have the parking lot and the roadway fixed at the Roeth Park, not necessarily fixed, but really pay for the, for the first time ever. So congratulate Brian Connors and the Parks Department crew and, and everybody involved with that. And of course, engineering to get those groups out there to do their work. The other thing I wanted to mention, it's more of a question and probably our clerk, Amy Humphries can answer this question best. I'll use the word irked. I've been kind of displeased lately. We see a lot of events and signage out on people's lawns for, for community events. And I'm sure they're getting permission to put signs out with nonprofit organizations, again, like V O N Secure House, like the Terry Fox Run. We're seeing more and more signs out on lawns and, and streetways, advertising businesses. Doesn't matter if you're a pizza place or you sell garage doors or, or whatever you sell. I want to get Amy Humphries, some of the engineers, I mean, from the, from the city clerk to give everyone an idea as to what sort of the local municipal bylaw is on, on such signage or, or hammering a sign up on a, on a telephone post. To promote your business. It's one thing to do a, a garage sale on a Saturday. It's another thing to put up a sign that you really expect to be there 12 months of the year, every day, day in and day out. And, and the fact that you're not paying to put that sign up for advertising either. Just curious what we could have an answer from Amy Humphries or from somebody else on that one. No one willing to comment or say with the local, with the local, I'm putting you on more of the spot than anything else, but I know there's, there's bylaws in place that require permission for, for signage for, for nonprofit events. But, but just generally for, for generic advertising is a different story.
Thank you, your worship. Through to councillor Schadberg. Sorry for the delay. We have some sound issues in our council chambers we have to deal with before I can come on. Now I can speak to the requirement in the public right of way and I will ask our deputy city engineer to correct me if I'm wrong here. But any signage that is in that public right of way along the roads and a lot along our sidewalks is actually not permitted without council's permission. So my understanding is when those signs are there and we receive complaints, the public works department or our parks department generally go and pick those signs up. Now in terms of signage on people's front lawns, again, I'll ask the deputy city engineer to correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe that signage on people's lawns is okay. So for example, if you have someone work on your roof and they put that sign on your lawn for a period of time, I don't believe that that is a violation. I'm also not aware of any violations if signs are posted on telephone poles and, and things like you mentioned.
And it looks like we don't need any correction of the record on that one. And of course, many of the annual events that take place, councils granted permission time and time again to those individuals, as you rightly pointed out in your comments. So sometimes we don't necessarily have to be asked to gain, but for some of these other ones, if you do find them, you find it to be a nuisance, you could even take it out of the ground yourself. Now, did you have further comments councillor Schadenberg or was that it?
I'm fine now Trevor. Thanks, your worship.
Well, I think everybody's covered everything off again. And it was so great to see councillor Fraser grab his Terry Fox shirt while we were having this discussion. And, and two thumbs up. And again, seeing the picture of that beautiful needle point that you donated to the hospital. I mean, very touching. And I know that I, I, I received the story of what it means to you personally, and I'm sure others have as well. I don't want to put you on the spot to share it with the public, but anyone who gets to, to be there and see that needle point that was donated will know that it was very special. Thank you very much. And looking for a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Fraser, seconded by councillor Agioni. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And we are adjourned. See everyone again. Thank you.